I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any meetings called to order? Item number four.
I make a motion to recess the commissioner's meeting and open the salary board. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, to adjourn from the freshers meeting, recess from the freshers meeting, and open the salary board. The board is open. Item number three.
Can I make a motion to request a minute? Item thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, second by Treasurer Miller, to approve item three on the agenda in the minutes of the January thirteenth meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number four.
Make a motion, we move on. Item number four.
I'll second that.
Motion by Coroner Conerton, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item four, direct administrative error in starting salary of the administrative assistant deputy coroner, salary subposition should have been twenty-nine, seven, eighty-six. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment on the salary board? If none, item five.
I make a motion to close salary board and reject the commissioner's meeting. Nine.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Miller, to close the salary
board and convene the freshers meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Back to the freshers meeting, item number five.
Make a motion to approve the minutes with the correction that's listed on your agenda for the minutes of January thirteenth. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, to approve the minutes of January thirteenth meeting with the associated correction. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item six.
Make a motion to approve item number six on our agenda.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item six on the agenda, to approve the cash disbursement, electronic payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item seven.
Make a motion to add item approved on the salary list on the agenda. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item seven on the agenda, ratifying the semi-requests under payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight.
Make a motion to approve item number eight on our agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item eight on the agenda, ratifying self-determination of Michelle Lutz from domestic relations. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve item number nine that's listed on the agenda. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item nine on the agenda, ratifying and acknowledging the hiring of Eric Donovan of Montrose to the open part-time position of corrections officer. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion. Aye. I make a motion to approve item number ten, but to acknowledge the hiring, not to ratify, because it's not effective until tomorrow. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is the date correct? To get rid of what's to acknowledge. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item ten on the agenda, to acknowledge the hiring of Spencer Staudt of Montrose to the children and youth case worker one. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item eleven.
I make a motion to approve item number eleven on our agenda.
Second. I would just like to add that it was gone two weeks ago, and it's because of changes in businesses, the names are changing.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item eleven on the agenda. The Siskiyou County Emergency Management prepared its task force for the years 2016 and 17, and the reason why it's all restated was there was a couple of changes due to people moving from businesses to businesses. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And how do these people, is this all pointed by the commissioners? How do they get on this board?
This is handled through the emergency management group. Paul Johnson works to try and get people from the different areas and different businesses and associations. All in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve item number twelve on our agenda. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item twelve on the agenda, to sign for the purchase of one low-floor bus under thirty-foot and two MV1 vehicles and one accessible minivan for the three of Siskiyou County, Wyoming County Transportation. Questions or comments? Yes, Chris?
What's an MV1 vehicle?
Nah, it's a little bit bigger than a toaster oven. It's like a, if you see the new Ford Transit vans, if you've seen those, they're like someplace between the small Transit van and the big Transit van. They're basically built just for hauling passengers and stuff. It's kind of just the brand that it is. And actually, we have a couple right now, and they're working really good. They handle well in the weather and conditions and everything. All in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve the appointment of Ben Hoover of Springville to the public director position to the Siskiyou County Conservation District. Would you like that changed, please? Effective immediately, to fill the open position through summer 31st, 2018. And I just want to note that he has been associate director in this division since September 20th, 2012, which is a requirement of him going, being appointed by us. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item thirteen, through the appointment of Ben Hoover of Springville as the director. Questions or comments?
Is he replacing somebody, or this is a new position, or what is it?
It's a replacement. It was an open position.
So who was there before?
Brody Webster.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen.
I make a motion to approve item number fourteen on our agenda. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item fourteen on the agenda, sign the print management agreement lease with Eastern Management Print Network in Endicott, New York for a term of sixty months, effective January 28th, the amount of $130.32 per month for the sheriff's office. Questions or comments? What it is, is it's basically a Xerox copier that we're leasing, and it eliminates most of the print stations. Everything will be networked to it, so instead of every person having to have a printer, we can eliminate all those printers and all that toner charge that we're paying each year. And it's kind of like a, this is like the start, the pilot one, to see how it works in that office, and then if it works, then we'll look at doing it in other offices to try and reduce the huge costs that we have in printer-toner cartridges in the county. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item fifteen. Public comment on the freshers meeting?
Got a question on the meeting with Cooperative Extension a few weeks ago. How's that go?
Well, Cooperative Extension was here, talked to them. They have lost, right now, seventy million out of their ad budget out of Harrisburg, and they're, right now, they're telling me there won't be any effect to the services and what's going on. Actually, they didn't mention that they're got another program they're going to try and get started up, and I can't remember it off the top of my head, to help the communities and programs for the kids.
But no cutback?
No cutback at this point. And I have, we have told the girls in the office down there that, you know, if they get any emails or anything stating that, you know, they need to cut programs, or they're going to cut them, or something, they'll notify us right away, so we can stand top of it. Any other public comment? Chris?
Once upon a time, when the commissioners wanted to advertise something, there was a paper of record for a job, for a posting, for anything that was happening that needed to get out there. Do we have a paper of record anymore?
It depends on what it is. There's only certain things right now that require the paper of record. As far as jobs within the facility, of course, being a union shop, the first thing they have to do is post it internally, give all union employees five days to make a decision whether they want it or not. If they do, then they, of course, they get the first option to it, and that kind of bumps from there. Once that is done, depending on position, if we already have a, and we get tons of applications weekly for employment, if we have a good pile of resumes that fit the bill, you know, the HR group and we'll go through them and sort them out to see who's qualified by the resumes and interview. If it's something that we don't have an abundance of, then, you know, gets advertised in the paper and gets advertised on the internet.
Well, that's really the nub of the issue. Once, we used to get three newspapers, but the Forest City News doesn't carry very much for Montrose, so we get two newspapers, The Transcript and The Independent.
Right.
And there's also The Mulligan on the weekend. And you can peruse the papers, and sometimes there's nothing there where you would have the public notices for what's going on in the courtroom. There's nothing in The Transcript, there's nothing in The Independent, and lo and behold, sometimes there's something in The Mulligan. I think that, in my opinion, I think we should have a paper of record, as well as the stuff being posted on the website. We used to have that posted on the website, too. There's nothing there about a paper of record.
The jobs are posted, there's an employment opportunity page, which lists every job that's open, when it was posted, the job description, the salary.
But it's not in the newspaper. It's, I believe it should be in the newspaper, one of the newspapers. It always has been. I just think it's wrong, in my opinion. And there should be, there should be a place, the Transcript used to be called the paper of record for the county, that was the phrase that was used, some printed material that goes, that people subscribe to, where it says "public notices." I believe that should be posted there.
We do do a lot of public notices when we do different things.
Yes, but where's it going to be?
Well, it goes into local papers. Which papers do we currently advertise in?
We use Times, Shamrock, Mulligan, Independent, and sometimes if we have to, we use the Pressman's.
Well, I hardly call The Times, Shamrock a local paper.
What would that be?
It's a daily paper, you know, it's a daily paper, that's one of the reasons why they use that one, too.
Well, I would like to recommend to the commissioners to pick one or two papers that job postings and important information would be posted in. Not everybody uses The Internet, but anybody can pick up an Independent or The Transcript.
Well, definitely, there's four local papers that we have in this area. We have The Transcript, The Independent, Rocket, Mulligan.
What I'm saying is, my beef is that it becomes a movable feast. Maybe we'll put it here, maybe we'll put it there.
Is that how we advertise? I thought when we advertise in one, we advertise in all of them.
No.
I use the year three every time I use it.
She's got her hand up.
To be clear, I mean, public notices have to be put into a legal section. Mulligans is not a newspaper, it is simply an advertising circular. That would work for job postings, but it would not work for any legal notice, such as a meeting notice, things like that.
Right.
It wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't serve to read that.
I guess with this wind up, we'll have to take a review of it and look at it and see what we need to do to.
It also should be on the website, the county website, what papers are the papers of record.
Right. Okay. I agree with you.
Thank you for that.
Jerry, do you have to hand up?
Yes, I wanted some clarification on the emergency task force. There's two people at the end that says "oil and gas," Mark Sullivan, Justin Phillips. Why does it just say "oil and gas"? Are they with a company? What does that mean?
I'd have to check with Paul on that. You know, Mark Sullivan's with Access Midstream.
Access, wait, so Mark Sullivan is Access Midstream?
Yep, and Justin Phillips is Southwestern. It was just left off of the notes that they said. That's all.
Southwestern. And then I had a question also, if somebody else has. I'd like to know what's the latest, is the budget now signed, and so you're getting your money?
No.
You still not getting your money?
Well, we're getting some money. Budget is not signed.
It's not signed.
They've approved some of the budget, some of the budgets they have not approved. So they're still fighting it out in Harrisburg as to what they want to do. You know, the bigger issues and concerns we have is our funding streams. Some of them are in danger, because, like, for instance, with children and youth, because Philadelphia hasn't filed all their paperwork for their last quarter, which was the end of June of last year, it impacts the amount of funds that were used for children and youth services, which will dictate as to how much money is available for the following year. So if they don't do their paperwork, it'll reduce the amount of money that's available, which will reduce the amount of money that comes out to everybody.
So children and youth is having a problem getting funds? Anybody else?
No, that's what I said. What I said was, the issue and concern right now is, is that children and youth services in Philadelphia, because they've not done their paperwork and turned it in, will have an impact on the funds that are available for the next year to children and youth services, which means there'll be less money coming from the state, and more money will have to come from the local level.
So that you're talking next year, 2017?
No, I'm talking from July 1st of 2015 through June 30th of 2016. They're on a fiscal year, we're on a calendar.
And any other departments having difficulty, that they're not getting funding?
Well, we don't have any, you know, there is a lot of concerns still in the county. You know, if you saw what was going on with the hospitals, you know, Barnes Case on lost like $900,000 in funding that they're not getting. So there's a huge concern there. I haven't been able to get ahold of Endless Mountains yet, I've got to get a call into them to see if they've been affected. But, yeah, you know, there's still programs throughout the county that, you know, have issues because the funding streams haven't been solidified, or all the budget line items have been addressed in Harrisburg.
So is the county still paying for, like, seniors lunches and all that kind of stuff?
No, actually, they've got their funding, and actually, they were sending the check back to us that we lent them and not paying that back. So that is still moving forward.
And then I was wondering, what can you say about the noise ordinance? I know I wasn't here last meeting. I heard that you're saying that we have to appeal to the DEP. So who is to appeal to the DEP? You mean the citizens?
The citizens. I mean, you can call your legislators. That would be the best thing to do, call your legislators, and, but also the citizens to call and complain. If you remember the, let me find it here again real quick here.
Like, which number would we call as far as DEP?
Well, you'd call DEP headquarters in Harrisburg.
Harrisburg?
And ask for the director.
And the director is John Quigley?
Right. And you would start with them and.
And ask them to add that legislation in their new regulations?
Right. Well, it was in there, and they struck it out. You know, the oil and gas industry, of course, did originally have language in there for noise ordinances, but for some strange reason, DEP's got all that language stricken out of the bill that they're working on to pass and the regulation they're working on to pass. So all that has been stricken out of it, so that it doesn't exist in there anymore.
And that's in the new regulations?
DEP, and I can't remember the exact year, I don't know if it was in the seventies or eighties or nineties.
Seventies, I think you're saying.
But they, at that point, made the statement that they would not control noise in their department. And then, of course, when the Oil and Gas Act came out and all that started moving forward, there was movement to put verbiage in the regulation to make sure that they could take and control the noise ordinances, especially with the compressor stations and drilling. And unfortunately, that's all was stricken out and behind the scenes, I guess, and nobody actually knew about it. We were always under the impression here, as you were well aware before, we said that, you know, while DEP's responsible for the noise ordinance, well, we've now find out that they're not, because they've elected they don't want to do it. Now, I find that amazing, when I find out that since the beginning of the impact fee, DEP gets $6 million a year to use toward regulating the oil and gas industry, and you know, they've got $24 million so far, and they don't want to take care of the noise ordinance.
So you're saying that from the impact fee, they're getting $6 million a year?
Yeah.
Why would it be the same every year? Isn't it, doesn't it?
Because that's the way the legislators wrote the bill.
It's not based on how many wells are producing, not like the county?
No, they get $6 million a year, emergency manager gets $750,000, state fire commission gets $750,000 a year, PENDOC gets $1 million a year. The natural gas energy development, that one changes. It was nothing the first year, then it was $2.5 million, then it was $7.5 million, then it was $10 million, so they've gotten $20 million so far.
But isn't that a DEP project? Gas development? Or whose project is that?
I'm not sure who does that. DEP itself got $24 million. And Conservation District got $22.5 million, and Christian Voat got $4 million, and PUC got $4 million. So there's, and plus, you've got, you know, you had $308 million went into the legacy fund, which goes to all the counties, so that just didn't come back here, that went all over the state. And then the $463 million, which was supposed to come back to the counties, came back to the counties, and the rest went into the housing rehabilitation, and that was spread across the Commonwealth to different groups.
So then you're saying that the citizens have to, like, pressure their legislators, and then what about the municipalities, all the supervisors? Can we pressure the supervisors?
You can. You know, the other way to handle this is, is that the local municipalities or townships can adopt a comprehensive plan and put zoning in, and they can control it through zoning. But the word of caution there is, is that, you know, not only is that an expensive issue to do, but when you take a township that maybe has a $50,000 or $100,000 a year budget, and they've got to go up against one of these big corporations, they're not going to have the revenue for the attorneys to take and do that. That's why it was believed that the state would handle this, and the state would be involved in it, and the state would take care of it, so that, you know, the local, lower level groups wouldn't have to take and try and do that big fight. Now, that's one of the things they do out in Arkansas, is that, you know, they have a group out there that just handles all the complaints about oil and gas at the state level, and that takes care of it. It doesn't have to be handled at the local level.
Well, which townships? I know Liberty Township has a zoning ordinance for noise.
No, they don't.
They don't?
No.
I was there when they did it, and they decided on it. And why do you say no?
Because they don't. I was township supervisor for years, and I kept involved. I know what's going on.
You sure about that? Because I was there.
We have a planning commission, and we did a comprehensive plan, but when it got to zoning.
Don't you have SALDO in Liberty Township?
Of what?
Don't you have SALDO zoning comprehensive plan?
There's a comprehensive plan, but no zoning.
Just because there's a comprehensive plan, doesn't mean they have zoning. And actually, you can get with Bob Trump then after the meeting, and he can tell you which townships have the.
You don't know, you don't know at this point, do you? Which ones have it?
I think there's four or five of them.
Four or five of them, and do any of them, as far as you know, have a noise ordinance?
As far as I know, none of them do. Chris, you had to hand up?
Yeah, I have two questions, totally separate. The first is, it was brought up a couple of meetings ago by, I believe, my wife, regarding the budget in Harrisburg. And I think you said that we informed the commissioners that there are some districts, some counties, that are withholding money from Harrisburg until they settle this.
Right.
And I think you said that you would run it by the solicitors, see if we, you know, if this continues, where we're not getting a lot of money, and what we're still sending our money to them.
Right.
Was there any, was there any follow, was there any follow-up to that?
Yeah, it was looked at, and we had the solicitors working on it, but about the time we were getting ready to really get into it deep and find out from other areas what they were doing, that's when they finally passed some of the budget, and it freed up the money. So right now, we're not out any funds. Our funds are all flowing in, so we don't have any issues.
But would that be an option if that continued?
Well, I think that's still an option, it's on the table, look at and see. But again, that would take the work of the elected officials in the other areas to work with the commissioners and be willing to do that.
Okay. The second question comes as a result of this, the emergency preparator task force. So at the end of my little trip down memory lane, I'll have a question. Several years ago, many of the people that are here now were here in that meeting as well, there was a big discussion about what, who had jurisdiction, and what was the protocol, God forbid something happened to one of the wells. And there was an EMS worker who was standing right over there, who said that she was told by the people in the gas industry, I believe it was Calvert, but I can't swear to that, that you stand by, will bring the dead to you, the bodies to you. So I'd like to ask, who, at this point in time, God forbid something happens, who does have jurisdiction? What is the protocol? Do we have our EMS people go in and help, or do we just stand by and wait for someone from one of the gas industries to direct the operation?
No, what happens now is the EMS and our emergency management people, if there is an issue with a line or a well, they're, you know, usually now, the gas company's in contact with us before we even know about it, before the alarms even go off. But once an issue arises, the first thing they do is communicate between the three groups. And the first thing, of course, is not only to try and protect the life that was there, but also to protect the EMS people, to make sure that they don't get put in harm's way either. So there's a coordination effort now between all three organizations to make sure that, you know, they just don't charge in before they know that it's safe for them to go in, so that they won't be put in harm's way, too. So there is, there is cooperation now between the three groups.
Who has precedence?
Most of it falls back to emergency management.
So it's, okay. So it's more on, it's more, more of it is decided by the local authorities as opposed to the gas industry?
Yeah, yeah. It's not about, it's not about, you know, it's not about, in the beginning, it was that nobody really had a lot of training and knew what was going on with the well pads and pipelines. Since then, emergency management has had some trainings with pipeline issues and with well pads, to try and educate the EMS, the first responders, so they know what they're getting into. And in that, they build a relationship with each other to say, okay, let's all work together and make sure we do this, so that, you know, the last thing they want to do is put, you know, 50 first responders in harm's way, charging into something when they don't have the gas turned off first. And to make sure that, you know, we keep everybody safe that we can. And at the same time, figure out the way to get the people that are injured out there as quick as possible.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is the Sinkovich lawsuit still going on against the county? They're suing the county for not enforcing land ordinances. Do you know at what stage that lawsuit is at, at this point?
I couldn't tie on that. The solicitor's handling that, I don't have enough data on that.
So I can ask the solicitor?
Yep. Anything else? Make a motion, Mr. James?
I make a motion to close the freshers meeting and open the retirement board.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, close the freshers meeting, open the retirement board, all in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-nine, retirement board meeting, called to order at 9:29. All are present. Item number three.
I make a motion to approve item number three on our agenda. Paul's talking.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item three, to hereby adopt and approves the amended and restated plan document effective January 1st, 2016, to be submitted to the IRS for our favorable determination. Questions or comments?
Do you have any details you can give us publicly about that?
Yes, it's the same plan that we always have, to be in compliance with the Internal Revenue System. We have to file our retirement plan with the, what the plan is, and for their approval. We do this every. approval. We do this every, every three years, I think it was, every four years. And they've always approved it. It's not been a problem. Actually, I think this is the last time we have to do it, they're changing all the requirements again. So it's just IRS paperwork that's got to be done. If you don't do it, you get fined. If you, you know, and it's just filing the plan saying this is our plan. So it's kind of ironic. It's kind of like the new requirements for the Affordable Health Care. We have to file paperwork now with the Internal Revenue Service by the end of March. And if we don't file it, it's a $3 million fine.
Wow.
So, yeah. So we have to, and because of that, that will require a person. And if you notice, we have more people now because that will take a person at least 25% of their day, every day now for a year and all of their time for the first three months of the year, just to do that paperwork.
Have you found that the Affordable Health Plan has been changing like every six months, every so many months? New requirements or new whatever?
No, what they do though, they do, you know, like the Cadillac tax, they've kind of slowed that up again as to when they're going to start charging for that. Actually, you know, the last figure I had in 2020, it was going to cost us like a half a million dollars in the tax just because of our, the health insurance plans that we have. And my understanding is they're slowing that up now. But they've got, I think it was, you know, mega millions of dollars in debt in Washington for the startup of Obamacare that they don't have any funding to pay it back. So.
Have you found that it's less money for the employees under the Affordable Health Plan as far as their part to pay?
No, because our people are covered under our insurance plan. They're not, they're not covered under the marketplace or anything like that. So, you know, they still have the same plan with us. Any public comment on the retirement board?
I make a motion to have the chief clerk read documents for the meeting for approval. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, to have the chief clerk read documents for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Retirement board meeting was called to order at 9:29 by Commissioner Hall. It was a motion by Commissioner Arnold to hereby adopt and approve the amended and restated plan document effective January 1st, 2016 to be submitted to the IRS for a favorable determination. Second by Commissioner Warren.
Hearing that, I have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I have a second.
I'm sorry.
A motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Treasurer Miller, to approve the minutes is so red. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item six.
I make a motion to close the retirement board at 9:33. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, to close the retirement board at 9:33. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so period. Meeting is done. Thank you everybody for coming.